Yeah, bring it. Point that out.
We will certainly cover that slightly well.
Okay. All right. Meeting called to water. This is the March 5th, 2025 special budget meeting here at the council chambers. Would the clerk please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the open public meetings law duly announced, advertised and posted in the municipal building. The meeting will adjourn no later than 10:00 PM unless the majority of the council members that are present vote to extend the time.
All rise for the flag of leaders. Councilor Pignatelli with leaders.
Yes, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Koala.
Present.
Council President McCann. Councilman Pignatelli.
Here.
Councilwoman Rose.
Here.
Councilman Saliani. Councilman Slasinski.
Here.
Councilman Talamini.
Councilman Talamini and Councilman McCann have indicated they can't make tonight's meeting. Do we have a motion to excuse?
Motion to excuse.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And let the record show that Councilman Saliani will be joining us late. He'll be probably about quarter after. Certainly start the meeting without him. Do we have a motion to open a public?
I'm moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Not seeing any public. Do we have a motion to close?
I'm moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Okay, so here we are for the 2025 budget presentation. We've got our borough administrator and our CFO present. The budget committee has been working on this budget with our professionals for the last couple of months. And at this time, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Coons. And just so everybody knows, after Mr. Coons and our CFO's presentation is done, we are going to have Peter Havel from the library doing a presentation on his portion of the budget, and also Ariel from the senior center. The idea here is to be very transparent as we're going through this budgetary process. So you will hear over the next couple of days, you'll hear from the police department, you'll hear from the DPW, you'll hear from the fire department, you'll hear from the senior center. So all borough organization will be represented. So we have full transparency as we're going through this process. Mr. Coons, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think I'm gonna start just by talking a little bit about the budget process. So here we are in early March, and we'll talk about this probably towards the end of tomorrow night's meeting in terms of what the introduction and adoption timeframe looks like. But the budget process actually starts in September when I send out budget packages to all the borough agencies. That includes volunteer boards and commissions and departments. They put together their budget packages, submit them to David and I. We then meet with everybody, go through their budget proposals, make changes, ask them to justify their requests, consider their capital results or their capital requests as well as we put together the capital plan, which we'll hit on a little bit tonight. And that's usually then by around the holidays, we're putting together a first cut of the budget that we then share with the finance committee, and we engage in discussions with the finance committee regarding their goals and priorities for the upcoming year, make adjustments as needed, refine everything. All through this process, we're looking at our surplus, our underlying financials, trying to sort of read the tea leaves on what may be happening in Trenton and the broader economy to craft a final budget plan that we can then present to the entire governing body, which is the part of the process that we're at right now with this meeting. So I would like, and I know David too, I would like to just express our gratitude to all the volunteers and the department heads for really every year kind of coming in with budget requests that are reasonable, cost conscious. You know, we have a, I think, a very solid process here. And they know that, you know, what we want to see originally from them is whatever they feel is legitimately needed to execute their missions. That's not to say that they always get everything that they ask for, that there aren't adjustments made along the way. But, you know, they always come in with that in mind, and they take that instruction seriously. So my thanks to them for continuing to do that this year. So Mayor, as you had mentioned, the plan tonight is David and I will go through the current fund budget, appropriations, revenues, overall financial picture, tax impact to the public. Then we'll hear from Peter Havel about the library budget and Ariel Preciado about the senior center budget. Tomorrow night, we have an action-packed lineup. We have DPW, fire, and police will all be presenting to you. Okay, so the slide deck that you have is about 56, 57 pages. That's not all for tonight. That's presentations for everybody. So that's what we're gonna cover in both nights. Okay?
Water and sewer will both be part of the DPW presentation tomorrow. So you'll get those utility budgets, you know, tomorrow night when you have the DPW.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first slide as we start there. Let's talk a little bit right off the bat about what part of the tax levy we're talking about as we throw around the multitude of numbers that we're gonna be talking about this evening. So as you can see from the chart, it breaks the levy down between the schools, both local school, regional school, the county, and then the total municipal portion, which is 25%, okay? That includes our open space tax. It includes a library tax levy, which is about 2% of the overall. And while you're gonna hear from Peter about how he spends that money, you really don't have any control over how much the levy is. That is set by state formula based on an average of the last three years' assessed value. And the state basically gives us a figure, gives every town a figure every year. That is the minimum amount of required funding. Okay? So what we're really talking about when we talk about our budget plan for this evening and the amount of the property tax levy that you have some measure of control over, it's the remaining 23% that you see there in blue. Schools overall make up 65%, with the local schools making up 45, regional schools 20%, and the county levy being the remaining 10%, okay?
So local and regional school is 65% of our budget.
Combined.
Combined. 65% of the tax levy.
Okay.
Again, what we're looking at on this slide is not the budget per se, it is the levy. And the county, the regional, and his local school district are estimated here. We have an idea what their budgets are gonna be, and we assume they're going to go up like everybody else's. But this represents the tax bill that you get, you know, quarterly at your house. We represent 25% of that tax bill. So I think that's an important message for people to understand that the tax bill is what we're talking about here. We have control over 25%, our full budget, but their tax bill comes to the house, we're driving a quarter.
Mr. Here, can I just ask a question just for the residents here? At this point, obviously, we're only talking about our 23% here. Have we gotten any indication from the regional schools or the local schools or the county as far as any information of what they expect their levy to be or increase?
I have just got anecdotal that they're facing the same challenges we are. I've not heard any specific numbers, but our insurance is up by 13%. They're mostly probably part of the same JIFs and health plans, so I can't imagine that their insurance increase is gonna be any less. And then again, as you're talking those types of services at a school, labor and all the labor-related costs are a huge percentage of their budget.
This chart reflects what? How much of a percentage increase did you estimate in?
I estimated them at three and a quarter.
Okay.
Just, you know, kind of anticipating what it might be where we ended up, you know, we ended up in that same area. So I figured probably similar.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide. All right, so let's start talking about appropriations. Very high-level overview on this slide. So all of our, everything contained in our budget plan will maintain all of our existing levels of services, provides a significant increase in capital investments, as well as we're including some money to embark on some redevelopment planning activities as well. We're gonna go through, there's some detailed explanations in here on several sheets. So I'll, you know, talk about that when we get to those slides. But I do want to point out that if you exclude the impact of grants and shared services that all have offsetting revenues, budget for 2025 is up about $1.5 million or 6.7% over last year. Again, that includes a significant increase in capital that is largely offset with use of surplus, solid waste of 73,000, capital is 835,000, pension of 100,000, insurance of $425,000. And this represents about 1.4 million of that 1.5 million dollar increase. Okay? So those are your key budget drivers this year. Again, some have offsetting revenues, you know, that we've been able to identify, others do not.
And when you look at that solid waste, pension, and insurance, they're relatively fixed for us. Yes, we do the contract with solid waste every year, and we look to try to make improvements and look for opportunities to reduce that. But we signed a contract three years ago. That is the cost. Pension we get from the state. It is not something that we have any ability to affect other than long-term, if you reduce headcount, in two years, you would probably see an impact to your pension. And again, the insurance, you know, we get the bill from the JIF. So those three items, which represent, you know, probably a little bit more than the actual increase in the tax levy, are a little bit outside our control. So it makes the budget this year a little bit challenging in terms of how we manage the revenues and the costs.
Can you just talk a little bit about state aid and what we are with that?
Sure. We're gonna touch on this later in the presentation, but if you like us to address it now, we can. So state aid is flat except two years ago, the state stood up what was called a municipal relief aid program. That was two tranches of money. For us, that amounted to about $65,000 one year. They doubled that the subsequent year. So about $135,000 in additional state aid funding. At the time, that was, you know, very welcome. It was the first state aid increases municipalities had seen since the Great Recession, since probably 2010, 2011. So we have a slide later on that will show you where state aid keeps sort of declining as an overall percentage of revenue. That money was not included in last year's state budget, so it is not available for this year's municipal budgets. All right? That created $136,000 hole in our budget that needed to be filled.
So they said, yes, but we're not gonna give you the money to do it?
They said, they said after two years, program's over.
Yeah.
That's it. They just zeroed it out in their budget. The impact on the average household for the loss of that revenue is about $25 a year.
Thank you. And I'm sure we'll drill down further.
Yep, exactly. Okay.
Yeah.
I think we can go on to the next. Dave?
So the state gives us statutory cap laws that restrict our ability to increase the amount of tax revenue or appropriations. The levy cap refers to the revenue and the taxes. We're permitted to go up 2% over the prior year's levy. There are exceptions, debt, capital, pension, insurance, shared service, what we call outside cap. We're also allowed to bank cap for three years on the levy side. So if we don't meet the maximum amount that we're allowed to spend, and we need a little bit extra following year, you can bank it.
Can we just take, would the clerk just make note that Councilman Saliani just joined us?
Yes, Mayor.
6:13. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. So this year, in terms of the levy cap, we're about $750,000 under the allowable increase. We don't currently have a cap bank, but if we keep this budget where it is, we will then generate a cap bank for the next three years in case we need it. On the appropriation side, we're allowed to go up 3.5% with the COLA ordinance. About 75% of the budget's subject to the cap. Again, similar things. In addition to capital and debt and some health, there's grants and low SAP and library funding are all outside cap as well. We can bank cap for two years on the appropriation side. We do have some cap bank left from last year. And again, we're doing very well in terms of the appropriations cap. We're about 1.3 million under what we could spend. This is a little bit unique from what I'm hearing from my peers. A lot of my peers in other towns are not only pushing up against big increases in terms of just the tax levy, they're struggling to get under cap, you know? So we're in very good position in terms of where our finances are. And as Rich said before, when we're going through this budget process, we're not just thinking about this year. We are thinking about next year and the following year to make sure that we're in a good, sound position to be able to do the budgets we need to do to deliver the services.
Right. And if you remember, we did have an appropriation cap challenge last year. There were some changes that we needed to make in order to work within that, so.
So we are compliant.
So when you think about the municipal budget, the next couple of slides will hopefully help you think about it in a couple of different ways. This one here is a distribution of expenditures chart, breaking the budget down by, you know, sort of major component areas. So salary and wages, about a third of the budget, 34%. Our pension obligations are almost 10%. And health benefits currently make up about 12.7%. So if you add all those together, those are really what we talk about when we refer to personnel costs.
Over 50%.
And that's about 56, 57% of the budget goes towards personnel. All right? Your departmental OE and solid waste, and we broke out solid waste because it's such a large component by itself. Those are all the things you can think of as direct services, the goods, supplies, contracts that we use to directly deliver services to the public. They add up to about 22%, okay? So roughly a fifth of the overall budget goes for those sort of consumables, service contracts, and all that stuff that's sort of, you know, program instructors at the senior center and all of those things that help directly provide services to the public. All right. Capital and debt combined is about 16% of our funding. So that's all of our activities involved in maintaining our infrastructure essentially. And other OE, that 5.4%, that's things that are support costs, our IT expenditures, phones, property and casualty insurance.
Utilities.
Utilities, cost to keep the lights on, that comes in again at about 5.4%. This sort of divides up the pie a little bit different, a little different way. This allocates salary costs amongst all the major functions. So this is more of a budget spend by functional area. And you can see we spend about 35, almost 36% of our budget on public safety activities. That includes, you know, law enforcement, fire, OEM, first aid squad, stipend, and the like. About 20% goes to public works for everything from maintaining parks to maintaining roads, plowing roads. You know, you name it, all the plethora of things that they're involved in. Infrastructure and capital, like the other charts, a little over 16% or so involved in maintaining all of our physical plant and, you know, storm sewers, roads, et cetera. Core governmental functions, you can kind of look at that as all the activities that more or less take place on the upper level of Borough Hall. That's about 9.4. And if you look at sort of the social, cultural, recreational aspects and functions of what we do, we include rec, senior center, library, you know, that you're looking at a little more than 7%. That does not include things that are off-budget. It's important to note. So the rec budget is rather large. They offer a, you know, very, very comprehensive program of recreation programs and summer camp to the public. Last year, if you recall, we moved that off-budget. Okay? So that's supported by fees now and stands on its own, except some salary costs that are administrative in nature that we're not allowed to take out of budget. Okay? It also doesn't include all of the public events activities that the public events committee does or access for all those. Those are also, for the most part, off-budget too. And then you have, you know, court. All our court operations are slightly under 1% of our spending. Health activities, that's mostly our contract with Bergen County in the main for inspections, septic inspections, food safety inspections, nuisance complaint follow-up, all of the things that they do. That's also just slightly under 1% of our budget. And land use activities, that's planning, zoning, and everything in code enforcement included in that. Fire prevention, zoning, property maintenance. That's only 2.5% of our spending.
Now into the weeds.
Now into the weeds. Bear with me, the next three slides are.
That's quite the eye chart.
Gonna take a little bit of time. All right, so these are all of the salary and wage budgets taken together, excluding the library and accumulated absences, which we'll talk about when we get to the bottom of this slide. They're projected to increase overall by 2.2%. And that number, though, includes a projected cost of living adjustment of 3.5%. As you know, our contracts are still open. We're negotiating. We have negotiations with all three unions next week. So this is not based on a fixed contractual cost at this point. It is a budget number because we needed to estimate something there to move forward with the budget process. Okay? So I'm gonna sort of take each one of these functional areas in turn and highlight some things as I go along. All of the general government budgets, that's administration, general services, mayor and council, clerk, are up overall 3.4%. You're gonna see a large change there in my budget. Really, that's just reallocating the cost for my assistant between my budget and the clerk's budget as she started last year. There's no, you know, additional raise or compensation. It's really just an adjustment. Finance budget is up 0.6%, a $3,000 increase. And part of that is related to, we have a couple of new employees there, and we're actually able to effectuate a little bit of salary reductions as a result of the new employees coming on board. Land use budgets are up 15%, about a $60,000 increase. That's almost entirely made up of code enforcement and in particular, two factors that are going into that. One, we have an employee on maternity leave, so that is to fund a temporary employee during that time for office coverage. And the rest of that is for additional inspection activity related to the Lennar project. Okay? There is a state law that mandates inspections be done within 72 hours. Otherwise, the developer can actually pull out and hire privately. And so, you know, we endeavor to provide a high level of service and a timely services, timely inspections when they're needed. So this is for any additional inspectors that we need or stipends for our existing people working, you know, longer hours. And I want to point out that this is actually covered, there's an offset there on the UCC revenue from based on last year's actuals and the permit fees that Lennar was paying as they were coming in at the start of the process. So.
Do we expect Lennar to be getting COs this year?
Yes. Yes. One building is underway. They filed permits for others, including the two affordable housing buildings. So I think as you see, the year go on, you're gonna see a heightened level of activity there on actually constructing homes in the apartment buildings.
And once they, once they get the COs, when we start taxing that building? We don't have to wait for all development? We will get some added minutes this year, so it'll be additional tax revenue that won't be in the anticipated tax revenue. That'll roll into next year's, so we'll get some increase in ratables to be able to plan for. And again, probably the same thing next year. Will they finish next year or will it be 27 before the deadline?
They're planning on finishing summer, fall of next year.
So we'll get another big chunk of that.
And I should say, based on the original inspection schedule, that they anticipated inspection schedule that they gave us last fall.
So for two years or three years, we'll get. For two years, we'll get some added, and in both the following two years, we'll get the actual built-in to the budget.
We'll get a little bit this year, a lot next year, and then it'll be a final bump in 27.
Yeah, three.
But the biggest bump's gonna be in 26.
I think so.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay. We'll take extra.
Well, we're gonna talk about that a little bit more when we get to capital as well.
Oh, don't worry, Tim.
But it's, no, it's. It's a positive. It's a positive. Okay, public safety. So that's police, OEM, flood control, fire department. Their salary and wage budgets are up 1.4%. And that does account for fully staffed police department with steps, COLA, and retirements. Just a reminder, we have two officers right now, and you'll hear Tim talk about this more tomorrow night. We have two officers that are finishing up field training and are doing very well, from what I'm told. They should be on the road in April on their own. And we have two officers in the academy that are due to graduate in July as well.
It took a big hit on this last year in terms of the salary and wages for police when you put higher for all of the retirees. You know, because we had both retirees and new people on the books for a good portion of last year. So that's really helping with keeping that increase down a little bit. Even though if you looked at just what the salary guide would do, the salary guide would be 7%? If you're just looking at.
If you're looking at with steps.
With steps, yeah. I'm sure we'll have people retire this year too.
There are one or two that are eligible. We haven't received word that any of them will actually be retiring.
So where we know we can plan, where we don't know, we have to assume they'll be here for the full year. And anything we don't spend there obviously rolls into surplus for future spend.
Okay. DPW budget is actually down 1%, but that is pretty much due to labor allocations between the various DPW budgets and the water and sewer utilities, right? So you're gonna see an increase in the water and sewer utility salary and wage costs. That was when we went through with DPW and said, okay, really, who's assigned where, doing what? And you see that here within the current fund as well, where a lot of the budgets except streets and roads were down. A lot of that was just reallocating between those budgets and, you know, basically what functional area they were primarily assigned to. Okay? And it does include the funding for the individual that was made permanent full-time as well, although that actually hit water and sewer, I think, for the most part. Okay. And then your health department and rec, senior services, and whatnot, their budgets are up 11.6%. That again includes the cost of living adjustments and a possible promotion. And as Ariel will talk about, some additional funding for our bus driver due to increased demand. And again, she'll talk about that later when she's presenting a little while this evening.
And now that we have a new bus, which is readily accessible for handicap, that increase, people using it.
Yes. Yep. It's really driving demand. Okay?
It's also a good spend.
Yes, yes.
It's a good spend.
Absolutely.
So all of that, all told there, you're looking at a 2.2% increase. Accumulated absences, however, is down by $105,000. Some of you may recall, over the last several years, we had increased that budget line in anticipation of the police officers retiring. So we would have sufficient funding in that account to pay for the full-time payouts. We've been backing off of that because we hit the peak really last year. And we were able to, you know, rather dramatically reduce it this year based on projections going forward of how much we're going to need to cover future retirements.
Probably at 120-ish for the next couple of years. There is another little bubble that we anticipate in a few years. But after that, probably drop back down to 50, 60,000. Because you get most of the long-tenured people, what was the year that sick time stopped paying out? 2010?
Anybody hired after May 21st, 2011.
2011. So, you know, all the people who started after that may be accruing all kinds of sick time, but there's no payout at the end of it. So you're starting to see the positive impact of those statutory changes and the contractual changes you made here. So we have, we have a trust fund for the retirement.
Yes, sir.
And I remember being on the council as long as I've been on, in 2016 and 17, we were paying out over $100,000 from our budget because we didn't have a trust fund back then for it.
Further back than that.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's what I remember, what I can remember.
We set up the accumulated absence trust, I wanna say 2009, 2010 or so. It has been around that long.
I meant 2005, not 2006. 2006, not 2007.
And you're right, it was an outgrowth of some retirements that were happening around that time in like '06, '07, '08 when I started here. And we said, you know, we need a long-term mechanism here to manage these costs.
I think we were getting a hit with $200,000 or $300,000 on just retirement accumulated sick time. It was 2006. If you don't have a trust, that's in your, that's in your current fund budget, that's a hard hit on your current fund budget.
Right. So, time-wise, Pat?
Yeah, you know, I'm thinking 2016, no, it was 2006 I was on the council.
And the library salary and wages is up as well, Peter will probably talk about what he's doing there, what his plans are. That's part of his 30 mil, so it is, it is well spent there too.
This slide is about all of our departmental level budgets on the other expense or operating expense side. And those budgets make up just about $5.2 million of $16.6 million in total other expense spending. That's about 31% goes again to these direct expenditures, all right? Under the general government portion, again, that's budgets like administration, communications, commission, general services, mayor and council, clerk, collections. What's that?
Look at that mayor and council.
Yes, that kind of is the big driver for a couple of reasons. One, we had to increase, you kind of feel weird, it's your budget, I'm telling you what, it's your budget. But there is a professional service line item that is sort of a catch-all for professional service expenses that are not categorized elsewhere, like in engineering and planning. And with, you know, what we were trying to do with communications and whatnot, there was a need to increase that somewhat. And the other thing is, you know, this council is very engaged with training and learning opportunities, going to leading municipalities. And for years, that wasn't the case, and there was almost no, you know, training, travel cost expenditures or anything like that. And that was becoming readily apparent year over year, where you're seeing, you know, a negative number over the last couple of years. So we felt it prudent to increase that to really reflect the amount of funding we think that we're going to be necessary to support those activities. Okay, finance, Dave's the big spender here. There's really a very small increase there. And most of that is in shared services for our agreement with Hillsdale. And that's offset on the revenue side with the revenue that Hillsdale pays us. Land use is up a very small amount. That one wee budget for construction code looks awful on a percentage basis, it's 40%, but it's a very small budget. It's up $3,500. And that is because fire prevention asked for additional funding to support fire prevention activities, fire prevention week activities and the like. So that's what's encompassed there. Public safety, public safety budget is up 9.1%, about $47,000 overall. The primary driver here, there's, you know, some changes in the police OE and some offsets. But one of the things that we've seen over the years and continue to see, even though the main IT budget, we were able to find some better pricing on licensing, saving on some internet costs, we were able to reduce that. On the police side, it's increasingly a technology-driven organization. And the new licensing costs and ability to, you know, utilize that technology to its fullest is really what's behind that increase. It's about a $50,000 increase to their technology costs. And you'll hear from Officer Keenan, Captain Keenan, and Vinnie dies tomorrow night, and they'll get, they'll get right into the weeds on all of that. It'll be available on YouTube.
Yes, it'll be up and running by 11 o'clock tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Public works, I'm going to take engineering and planning first. We put that under public work, but it's as much land use as anything else too. We increased that by $40,000. And that is specifically for potential redevelopment studies. As we've been talking with the planner about the, you know, the potential for looking at certain areas, keep looking at improving our downtown and our commercial corridors. I don't have firm costs on that yet, but we felt it prudent again in, you know, sort of furtherance of one of the main goals here that we have to include some additional funding for that, all right? So that's $40,000 of the increase. The other couple of things I want to note there, under the shade tree commission, $14,000 plus increase. That is primarily for our forester that we use and increased workload and hours, especially as he has to start now going back out, re-inspecting properties to ensure compliance with permits that were issued last year in terms of mitigation efforts and tree planting. There's a time associated with that, there's a cost associated with that. I have had a conversation with the shade tree commission about the amount of, you know, application revenue that, you know, should really be coming in to offset that part of what he does. I know that there was a shade tree commission the other night, I don't know if they brought that up?
No.
They did not, okay, I'll follow back up with shade tree commission about that. Okay.
Did you, Wendy?
I didn't do anything.
Budget cuts me up.
I didn't do anything.
It's back, it's back.
We're back.
Basically having his technology challenge.
Could just be a little intimate. It's the wind.
And the other thing to note there is a $73,000 increase in our solid waste budget. There was actually, I think the contractual increase is actually a little bit more than that. We were able to reduce the disposal budget a little bit to bring that down. This is the last year of a three-year contract with Suburban. And so we'll be in a position where we either need to go back out to bid. I can tell you that I'm in discussions with a neighboring municipality about a potential shared service. You will be hearing more from me on that in the coming weeks.
Mr. Kuz, can you just elaborate a little bit about the study that was done between local Franklin Lakes and Wyckoff? Just remind the residents how we got that grant and.
Sure, so a couple of years ago, I want to say this goes back down to '23, we applied for a LEAP grant. I do not remember the acronym, what it stands for, Local Efficiency Aid, Local Efficiency Aid Program, there we go. And that is money that the state provides on a competitive basis to municipalities to study, study various shared service ideas, okay? So we partnered with Franklin Lakes and Wyckoff Franklin Lakes was the lead agency on that to study the potential of combining for solid waste collection, either on a continued outsourced basis or looking at standing up our own operation and bringing the entire thing in-house. Ultimately, that study didn't show that it was really beneficial to all three communities to do. And there were significant challenges, either bringing it in-house with siting and operation. All three towns cited issues with available land and facilities as an impediment. And there were separate challenges there with syncing up contracts and routes and things like that. And at the end of the day, as sometimes these studies do, you sort of had a disparate level of benefit depending on what town you were looking at. So ultimately, we decided that it didn't really make sense for us to do anything amongst all three towns. But the exercise itself, I think, was beneficial because it did show the potential for the borough to save some money if we were able to perhaps partner with a different community, you know, and look at, look at that, so.
Could we partner with?
So we're looking at a shared service, you know, with a town that does it in-house, neighboring municipality.
Could we go out of county?
You can go out of county, yeah.
So we could do Riverdale, Pumpkin Lakes, Haskell?
Yes.
If I recall correctly, the study showed that we provide better services at our neighboring little towns to our residents.
In certain respects, yes. For example, we provide bulky waste with every pickup, right? The other towns do not. It depends on how you define better service too, I think Wyckoff still does a hybrid collection schedule where it's once a week in the winter months and twice a week in the summertime. We're all pretty much the same when it comes to recycling. We have a higher level of yard waste collection, right? So that was one of the other things that we studied, how do you, you know, how do you harmonize those service levels? Because you really can't have different service levels. Or not do that easily, I should say. So yes, it really is a high level of service that we, you know, that we provide here. And Anthony will talk more about that tomorrow. I can tell you, doing bulky waste every week is not at all the industry norm. You know, talking with the consultants that we, that we engage with, that this is their specialty, they do these sorts of studies up and down the East Coast. And they said, that's not the majority at all, yeah, yeah, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kuz, I think it's important for the public to hear that, you know, we are looking at the shared services in advantage of the grants that are out there so we can, you know, make better decisions, thank you.
Sure. Okay, under sort of the social services banner, recreation. Last year, as we transitioned most of the rec funding over to the trust, it's completely fee-based, we provided them with some startup money, for lack of a better word, simply because, you know, they run programs all year long. And they needed some money at the, at the get-go to, you know, to be able to meet contractual obligations with, you know, supply vendors and, you know, umpires and referees and the like. So we no longer need to do that, so we've pulled that money out of the, out of the budget. That's a $55,000 savings. And then the court operations are, you know, slight reduction there, $2,100. And the library, a slight reduction as well. So all of the direct OE budgets overall are up 3% year over year.
So for court, we don't have an in-house court anymore, it's all done by Zoom?
Most of the sessions are Zoom, it is in-person for certain matters. But it's, but it's, but it's not like.
Is that the savings?
But it's not like the old days where you would see this room completely packed on a court day, no.
So there's no savings?
There is a savings on police for court security. And, you know, if you were to look back to the three, four, five-year history, you're going to see that line sort of steadily decreasing because we haven't really needed, you know, at one point we had, you know, and you walk through the doors there, you still have the metal detector. You know, that we bought for court security and the wands and the like. But that's one cost that's greatly been reduced by doing virtual court.
Thank you.
Okay, miscellaneous expenses, which are all of your non-departmental OE costs. And they count for about 65% of the total OE spending. They're up about 13% year over year, and let me dig into that with you and explain why. So for information technology, again, we were able to economize a little bit there. And we have a reduction of $6,000 legal. We had added $10,000 to that budget due to a couple of ongoing matters. Some of that is, you know, of course, contingency, depending on how those matters progress and may be resolved. There is already a little bit of contingency built into that number. This is just a little bit of a hedge because normally, you know, we don't go into a year with matters ongoing that we, you know, have an expectation that we're going to have some extraordinary costs for. Probably the single biggest thing that I want to talk about in terms of additional spending this evening are our insurance budgets. So the good news is property and casualty, which last year was up by over 10%. And I think we've been through the reasons why that took place due to, you know, workers' comp, the regulatory environment for that, and, you know, claims from natural disasters, et cetera, et cetera. But really, now it's turned to health benefits. Our joint insurance fund, our health insurance fund, I should say, we've done a very good job over, during the pandemic and beforehand stabilizing costs. Our year-over-year health benefit premium increases, I think between 2016 and through 2024 averaged like 2, 2.5% a year, very modest. And the dam sort of broke in 2024 for a whole number of reasons. On the prescription side, there's been this rise of the weight loss medications that's driving a lot of spending. Wendy, there's somebody at the door, can you just, Wendy, can you just keep that open? You have additional cancer medications that are very expensive. You've had a lot of claims in the fund that seem to become six figures, but they're not hitting the, what we call the spec limit, where reinsurance would kick in and offer some rebates. On medical spending, you've had an ongoing trend of additional outside network claims. So that utilization has increased, the cost for out-of-network utilization has increased as well. So there's a variety of factors, there isn't just one thing that we can point to here. But sort of a perfect storm all at once that's leading to an overall 16%, I'm sorry, 18% in our healthcare budget for the coming year. Now that's compounded, and it is in that 18% with additional retirees as well, right? So our total census count, the total number of people that are getting health benefits has increased with those retirees because the people coming in behind them are also eligible for, for health benefits. So really, there's been a lot of things here happening at once that's driving this. I'm anticipating that 2026 will probably be no better at this point from what we're seeing through the first half or the second half of 2024. And in fact, the health insurance fund may be in a position where they need to levy special assessments on top of this in order to meet their claims obligations, okay? That's something David and I have talked about. There was, I spoke with the finance committee earlier today, there was supposed to be a meeting Friday of the finance committee. That's been rescheduled to next Wednesday. Should have a fuller picture at the, at the fund level about what may be entailed here. And I'll report back to you when, when we get that. The good news is we have a health benefits trust fund where we've been putting any dividends that we get back from the, from the fund over the years as well as sweeping in any budget balances. And that's very healthy, and we would be able to absorb whatever that special assessment may be directly by using those funds. So we do not expect a budget impact or an impact on the taxpayer as a result of that, okay? And again, when I have actual numbers, I'll, I'll share them with you. One thing I want to point out additionally on health insurance, so, you know, you're talking about $400,000 of an increase. The blended, the blended rate increase is about 15%. That's about 13% on medical, 25% or so on prescription, 25% on Medicare Advantage. That's a regulatory change, that really isn't due to claims. As you may have heard, they eliminated what's called the donut hole for Medicare, which is great if you're on Medicare and you're on, and you're on those plans. It's a, it's a real tangible financial benefit. But those costs don't go away, all they did was shift to, to the providers. So the borough's picking up that cost essentially. And the retiree healthcare cost, because of the great influx of retirees that we had last year, isn't helping this year's budget either. Out of that increase, about 300,000 of it is attributable to retiree healthcare cost increases. About half of that is premium-driven, and about half of that is additional census count.
I know there's no way of calculating it, but let's just say the retirees were getting $100,000 a year. And now the new people replaced them, only getting paid $50,000 a year, so there is some type of a savings.
You get an offset on, through what we call breakage.
Right.
On the, on the salary side.
Yeah.
Okay, so it doesn't net out solely on the healthcare budget, it sort of disperses throughout the entire budget. And you do see some of that, and you'll see under the group health waiver program, there's an increase there. And that is because we now have about 13 employees on the waiver program. There are a few people that have family covers that are on that. A lot of them are the younger employees that frankly are still on their parents' coverage, and so they're waiving it. So there's a little bit of a cost there for the waiver payments. But combine those waivers net out to a savings of about $200,000 compared to if we didn't have the waiver program in place, okay?
Every little bit helps.
It's, it's impactful, it really is. Okay, utilities, there's some changes there. As the note points out, if you take into account budget transfers from last year. As the note points out, if you take into account budget transfers from last year, utility budgets are actually flat. We had programmed in $175,000 for vehicle fuels. We were actually able to transfer some of that money out last year. So the budget as amended was less. If you actually compare it to how it was originally adopted, it's the same $175,000. And telephone, you're going to see that's less. We just installed the new system with Ring Central. I think there's some final things to work out with that, but that new system is up and running. And that'll reduce our costs going forward for phone service. Pension budgets are up 5% overall. The driver this year being PFRS at almost $100,000 of an increase. And as David had pointed out, you know, that's something that can be controlled when you're doing contract negotiations in terms of overall salaries and in terms of headcount. But the bill itself can't be. We get a bill from pensions at the state and that's what we're obligated to pay on a year-to-year basis. Okay? And the other variable there on the pension side at the state level is how well are their investments doing? You know, in their actuarial calculations? Because there's a ratio of payroll, you know, to payroll of how much we pay. So for the employee, it's fixed, right? If you're in PERS, you're paying 7.5% of your pay. If you're in PFRS, that's police, you're paying 10% of your pay. The amount that the borough pays as a percentage of payroll is variable year to year.
Thing that bothers me is, and I know with PERS, municipality must pay their share, but the state doesn't pay their share. They only pay a portion of their share.
That was a big
That was hitting the pension system badly.
Yes, and the PFRS, PFRS system broke away as a, as a result of that. I, I know the state has endeavored to make full payments, but for probably the better part of 15 or 20 years, they did not. They gave towns a pension holiday in the late 90s, early 2000s that I think were probably still, still, still paying. In hindsight, that was a very short-sighted move on the part of the state.
It sounded good to them to say that.
It sounded good at the time when the stock market was going up and would go up forever. So on PERS, right now, we're paying about 15.5% of payroll. On PFRS, it's about 38%.
And it's on prior, prior year. So there, there is a lag. So in two years, your breakage will actually help us on PFRS because those higher salaries will fall off and the newer salaries will be taken into account for that number.
Right. Okay, capital improvement fund in terms of the overall numbers. Couple of things going on here. You're going to see an $835,000 increase in the amount proposed for the capital improvement fund. $500,000 of that or so, correct me if I'm wrong, David, is supported by additional surplus utilization. We'll get into more. What's that? The whole thing. The 500, 500,000 of that 835 is a direct result of a, what's called a rollback payment from the Lennar development, right? So the Lennar development was farmland assessed. When they got the permits, they started. It's no longer farmland assessed. The way the farmland assessment law works is there's what are called rollback taxes. So you go back three years, you assess the property as if it was not farmland assessed. And the developer owed us that calculated amount of money. That was about half a million dollars. So what we're doing is directly using that to benefit the public and putting that directly back in to capital. You know, again, trying to match a one-time revenue with a one-time expense.
So I'm a little confused. So it's not going up by $835,000?
On the appropriation side, it is.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the point is that it's the levy, the tax levy is not being impacted by that.
We'll show that momentarily.
Different slide.
You want to make sure.
Overall, overall debt payments, if you net that out, are actually down by about $25,000. All right, getting to the end here, I know this has been a lot to sort of, sort of throw out there all at once. The final portion is where we have our, what we call our special emergency allocations. The $40,000 that you see there was for the initial revaluation cost when we did them in 2021. Do we have one more year after this year on that? And then you're going to see support for utility. That ACO payment was finished last year, so we don't need that money in the budget anymore. So that's an $85,000 savings. And we reduced the reserve for tax appeals, you know, as we're doing the annual assessment program. You know, that overall level of appeal activity, you know, should be decreasing. And the reserve current tax of appeal reserve amount is fairly healthy. So we took a reduction there from 80,000 to 55,000. And overall, that results in all of these miscellaneous OE budgets being up 9.7%. I'm sorry, 12.9%. Okay. Next slide. So talking about our capital plan. Overall, we're proposing total fund or a total program cost of about $3.3 million. The important thing to note here, I'll point out a few things. We'll get into capital more intensely tomorrow night. A lot of the, a lot of the projects here are associated with the departments that are going to present then. But I just wanted to point out a few things. Under admin equipment and improvements, you see construction office vehicle replacements, two of those. That is also offset by funding on the revenue side, non-tax revenue on the revenue side. Because we had an increase in uniform construction code funding, we've matched that here to replace, add to the fleet Ford additional inspectors vehicles. The current vehicles are 2011, 2012 Ford, two Ford Focuses. What we would be doing here is what, what we're looking at is actually buying a couple of what's the name of the vehicle?
Maverick?
Maverick, thank you. I'm going to escape. Ford Maverick hybrids, actually. Other things to note, if you look over at street and road improvements, total funding for this year for the annual road repair program, including Yaupau Avenue, which will be done as a separately bid project, amounts to about $1.8 million. That is backed in part by an NJ DOT grant, about $200,000, and about $330,000 of existing capital funding from prior year's road programs that we would use towards that as well. So again, we're anticipating a rather robust road repair program for this year.
1.8 million is that?
In the aggregate, yeah. All right. And lastly, you'll hear from Tim tomorrow night, a couple of, again, technology-related items there. One, we need to replace our body worn cameras, which I know it seems like we just bought them. We bought them originally through a state grant program. But they'll get into the details of why we need to replace them.
And I guess we'll get further explanation on this $55,000.
On the drone, yes. Yes, it's actually very exciting.
Very exciting to spend, not to spend it. I hope we get some more information on that.
You're going to, you're going to get a whole presentation on that.
A real good explanation.
If it's the first cost, it's, it's a good investment.
Okay. The key thing here to note is this capital plan requires no issuance of debt. This is a fully funded pay-as-you-go capital program. All right. David, did you want to get into any more details on that?
No, I think most of the details we'll hit tomorrow night when we go through the departments.
All right, I've spoken enough right now. So David, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk about how we're paying for all of this. You know, go through all of the revenues, surplus, surplus regeneration.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So on the, on the revenue side, we're going to start with surplus because we were just talking about the surplus. As you saw, capital, we're increasing that spend by about 800,000. We're also increasing surplus utilization by about 750. So that increase in capital is really being paid for by an increase in surplus utilization. Why do we have so much surplus? We talked about the Lennar project giving us that rollback. We also had significant interest earnings last year. The downside to the significant interest earnings from last year, we've got less cash on hand. So our miscellaneous revenue, we're going to be anticipating less interest because there is less cash in the bank. And the feds also lowered the rate twice. So the interest rate we're getting has come down. So we're anticipating a little bit of a hit on the, the interest side in terms of year-over-year earnings. It's kind of, you'll see that 28,000 less in miscellaneous revenue. So a lot of that's interest earnings. The other piece inside of that is 130,000 we already talked about in terms of state aid being reduced. If you take that 130,000 out, that miscellaneous revenue line is probably up around 3%. So all those things that are miscellaneous revenue, whether it's court fees, permit fees, all those things are, you know, up slightly. You've made some changes to fees, so that's driving some of that. And the rest is just kind of where the business or the market or the, everything is in terms of what we can anticipate. So because we got that money from Lennar, next year, it's not going, we're not going to have that. We're not going to have that, yes.
We'll have tax revenue from the properties.
You'll, you'll probably still see some measure of an increase or heightened level of revenue in UCC fees as they go through and submit for additional buildings. And then you'll start seeing it come through on the property tax revenue side.
Okay. 2027 will be the year that we'll, you know, fully be able to see and realize all of that revenue, where it is, how it's flowing.
Right.
Kind of, so it does 2027. So does, does that get eaten up? I mean. Rich and I have plans for how to spend it yet. The first thing is to stabilize tax increase. You know, we really think moving forward after 2027 with some of the other things that are happening, we will be able to get that tax rate back down where, you know, we've been historically in that, you know, 2% range, which is, you know, kind of floating below CPI, you know, which is, you know, good to be able to say that we can do that. But we really, really feel very good two years out.
Okay.
Then I get to retire.
We've talked about that.
Not going to happen, right? Me too. Delinquent taxes, we've never anticipated a whole lot. So any delinquent tax revenue we get floats right into surplus. We did pick up quite a bit last year. We actually had some municipal leads finally get paid off. So that was about a $45,000, you know, plus in terms of revenue. And again, that went off to surplus because we didn't anticipate any of it. And then you see the municipal levy. That is the tax levy. That's the balance of the revenues that we have to collect to support the budget that Rich talked about. That's up 3.8%. That's total, that includes the library. And again, just, as always, our revenues have to offset our appropriations. So if the appropriations budget is 26 million, our revenues have to total that as well. So that's where we are in terms of revenues. In terms of distribution, you can see that back 10-plus years ago, about 76% of our revenues came from taxes. That's down to about 72%. Biggest, biggest change in that is in the utilization of surplus. We're probably at the peak right now. That'll come back down as we experience less of these, you know, big extra, you know, splurges of revenues that we got. We had a big one in 2023 with the interest rates. At one point, they'd been down to a quarter of a percent and they went up to 4% the next year. So again, all that excess interest revenue ran off to, to surplus. So our fund, our fund balance, will that be the 2.8? That's utilization surplus. That number will go back down next year. So this is a kind of where the revenues have been flowing. You can see historically where we've been. You can see where 22, 23, some of the, the changes in terms of levy versus impact to the residential tax bill. We had a good shift in terms of our assessment. It went from residential to commercial. So while the levy was up by 4%, the residential tax bill only went up by 2. This year, we actually got a little bit of reverse. This year, the assessment swung back to residential from commercial. So while our levy was only at 3.7, the impact to the tax bill is going to be about 4.3. You know, so it's one of those things that'll float up and down. If you look at CPI, CPI came in, you know, probably around, I think, 4, 4.3.
4.28.
4.28.
Yeah, for the New York, New Jersey.
So we're sitting right there on, on CPI, which is a good, good metric. And you can see what's driving it. You can see the peaks the last couple of years. It's been solid waste by insurance pension that are, that are driving those, those bubble ups that we have. Surplus started the year very, very healthy. You have a very, very detailed surplus policy. So we look at what our balance is and the policy says that we should use a certain amount. And that's, that's good for the taxpayers. We don't want to be keeping any more of their taxes in a bank than we need to to be fiscally reasonably responsible in terms of our reserves. So we are using a good amount of surplus, again, up 750,000 more than last year. But you can see that's probably not a bad deal since our change year-over-year. Bottom right was about $714,000 higher than where we started the year. So surplus, we're in a very, very good place right now. You can see my chart is different than yours. Rich and I were looking at this and we said, why, why is that strange triangle in the top right corner? It's because, it's because they were overlapping. You can see our surplus balance is high, but the increase and the change year-over-year is what's coming back down at the end of 2025. We don't anticipate replenishing like we have the last few years. When we look at our appropriated reserves, how much money did we have from last year's budget? We know that's down significantly the prior years. We don't see a whole lot of extra things. We know we're not getting a, a rollback anywhere this year. So we look at replenishment, we see replenishment as being down, down significantly from where it was in 2024. Still probably better than where we were back in the early 20s. That won't be as, as healthy as we started the year this year. And what's the impact? As we roll through all of the tax levies, we look at the library, we've estimated the schools. We've got our new net valuation taxable, gives us a rate. The municipal portion of the levy this year, ours, is $130 higher to the average resident. The library is going to add $11 to that as well. And roughly right guessing where the schools might be, we might, they might be around $360 in terms of their increase. Again, that is a really, just a rough estimate based upon them being up 3% or so from last year. As Rich said earlier, about $22 of that is due to the fact that the state took some of that aid away. Another 25 or so is the shift from commercial back to residential. So that's really what's driving the revenue picture for us.
Does anybody, before we move on with the departmental presentation, does anybody have any questions?
Well, back to your, back to your insurance points. When will we know what 2026 is going to look like for insurance? You said based on trending from 2020, 2024 forward, it looks like you're still looking between 16, 80% insurance rates in 2026.
And it may be more. I can tell you that the claims from the second half of 2024 was worse than from the July 1st, 2023 to June, to July 2024 period. Whether or not that continues or whether that was just a very intensive claims period is something that will be, you know, we'll have a better handle on as the year progresses. When the actuary looks at the data for rate development for the 2026 budget, he's looking at that sort of fiscal year period. So we do have another four months to go. But from what I'm seeing right now, it's, it's going to be significant.
Thank you, Rich.
Not seeing anybody. Anything else? Do we want to take a five-minute break or transition to the next person?
I think that'd be great.
Okay, let's take a five-minute recess. Take a five-minute recess.[583.29]
Circulate audiobooks, which in some other communities they don't even buy anymore. In Oakland, people still listen to audiobooks on CD. It is a dying medium in certain places. It is not a dying medium in Oakland. People still take advantage of that. Movies, similarly, movies have been on the, especially since COVID and everybody getting a streaming service if you didn't already had one. DVDs have become a less popular format for people to view movies, but in Oakland they still go out. So everything that, video games, things like that, music, things that you might not think that we have, we have those things in our library of things, which people at home, if you don't know, we have a library of things we do, has useful things that you can check out for free, including a knee walker, which I think somebody was asking about recently. We do have one of those for loan and a bunch of other really useful objects. We have a museum pass program that we pay for, so if you want to go to one of the many museums that we offer passes to, you can come in and get them for free. The exception to that is a museum of natural history, which you can go to for $7 a voucher, which is a steal, and it gets you at the front of the line and it gets you one of the special exhibits for free, and the special exhibits are always worth it. So I think we're waiting for a new batch to come in on those, but you should take advantage of those if you have the opportunity to or if you're interested.
Peter, could you just talk about the things, like you have got a metal detector down there, you've got seeds down there.
We do have a seed farm, which was from the, I don't want to, it's the Green Team or Sustainable Oakland.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they've replenished it recently. So we do have a seed farm. Nobody ever brings back the seeds, which is the idea, but it doesn't matter, we keep replenishing it. We've got seeds that you can get for, you know, if you want to plant a garden. Yes, we do have a metal detector. We have an outside projector screen. We have a high-quality projector. We have a slide scanner. We have a diagnostic tool to see what's wrong with your car. It works on most popular automobiles, if you need to self-diagnose, that sort of thing. We have an endoscope camera, so if you want to see what's going on in your roof or something like that, a hard place to get to, you can use that. There's a whole bunch of stuff. It's all on our website. Click on Library of Things and you can scroll through the items. There's a lot we try to add every year, so if you're interested, check the link on our website or you can also call us. So you can just come in and take a look. Most of the things are behind the desk. Anything else that you want?
No, I just wanted to make sure the public understands, you know, if you need one of these tools, they're available to you simply to sign out from the library.
Right, and they're free.
And they're free.
Yeah, and like, for example, the knee walker, like if you're having surgery and you require a knee walker, I think your other option is to rent it. We have one for free and we're, you know, it's a week loan. If you have a serious injury and you need the knee walker for a few weeks, come to the library, talk to us, we're reasonable, you know, you can keep it longer than the one week. We try to work with our patrons on everything. We try to be understanding and, you know, get people what they want. This is a service industry. If you think that we should have something and we don't have it, please come and recommend that we have it and we will consider that. That's our job, it's to give you things that you want. So that's kind of getting ahead of myself, but that goes for everything. Library things, books, movies, whatever, if you think that we should have it, make the recommendation, we're here to serve the public.
Those things, so it's for a week, everything is one week?
Correct, but again, if you're going away, you need the GoPro for a two-week vacation, we're going to make it a two-week loan for you. The sewing machines are actually fairly popular. We have two sewing machines. I don't know if anybody is, doesn't know that, but you can take the sewing machines and again, if you need it, sewing machine is something you probably need for more than a week, especially if you're learning, you know, we've let people have them for multiple weeks, as long as no one else is waiting. So things like that, that you might need a little bit longer, you can, you can take them for longer. Right, so getting back to materials, in other words, this is, so this is all the physical items that we have in our library that you can loan. It also includes the digital items that we have in our library, our virtual library that you can loan. So for those of you who may not be aware, you can get a whole host of digital products from the Oakland Public Library for free, including eBooks, downloadable audiobooks, music, movies, instructional videos, a couple, we have, I can actually read you the list of everything that we have. There's a few platforms for eBooks, the big one is Libby, so that's app-driven, if you don't have that, you can just download it. If you don't know how to download it, come and see us and we'll tell you how to download it. The other one is called Hoopla. Similarly, that's got a lot of eBooks, downloadable audiobooks and music. You get 10 checkouts a month, every month, for free. Download them to your device and you stream them through your Bluetooth from wherever you are. It's like a free Audible account, except you're not paying, well, it's free. So you're not paying anything, but my point being, 10 a month is very generous. And the reason we're still at 10 a month is because not enough people in the community know about it or take advantage of it. If you're paying for an Audible subscription, you should really check out Hoopla. It's free and the fact that you can download the items means that you can travel with it or you can stream it through your car, wherever you are. So that's kind of a nice perk with that. We also have Press Reader, which is an online digital magazine and newspaper product, so you get that on your tablet and you can just scroll through them and then when you're done with them, you delete them. We have Freegal Music, which is a music streaming service that is also free and you also get three downloads a week. You can download those thing, the three songs a week and then you can build yourself your own music library and then you can stream them wherever you are, even if you don't have an internet connection, as long as the library keeps the Freegal subscription. We have Mango Languages, if you want to learn how to speak a foreign language, you just go on Mango and you can do that online that we have. We have Canopy, which is a film service. It's got stuff for adults, it's got stuff for kids. It does not typically have big blockbuster movies necessarily, but it has the Criterion Collection, a lot of documentaries, popular movies that are a little bit older. The rights to get movies is a little bit more difficult, I think, for these companies, so they're not getting, you know, the newest, biggest blockbuster, but it's still a good resource. You can stream it on your tablet or device, you can just stream it on your smart TV. If you want to watch a film, especially a foreign film or a documentary, you should check out Canopy. It's free and it's the same thing, you get 10 a month if you want 10 a month. So that's a good one. We also have Brainfuse. Brainfuse is an online tutoring service. It also helps with job searches and there's also something called Vet Plus, which does some services for veterans who are looking for resources. So we bought the full suite, so you get all three of those. So you can find out more information on what Brainfuse is on our website. The three tabs are all individually linked there and you can click on them and you can just play around with them as long as you have a library card. Don't have a library card? You can register for a tip, for one online, it'll last one month, just come in at some point during that period to get your permanent card, show proof of address and you'll get your card. It's all free, it's all very easy. And if you just want to play around with something, you can get the temporary card, play around with the stuff, see if you like it and then come down for your, for your other card. So that's, that's what we have in terms of materials. That's the big green part of the, part of the pie, that's what we have for people to check out. Buckles membership, I have 13%, you know, Buckles membership is not cheap, it's around $50,000 including delivery a year. It's worth its weight in gold, it gives you access to 77 other member libraries and everything contained therein. It's the delivery service that when it was under the control of the state, your stuff would take 10 days, 14 days to get here. Now it takes sometimes next day, which is competitive with Amazon, who I consider to be our main competitor in terms of people getting books and getting them quickly. If you're on our route, you're probably going to get your stuff the next day, maybe two days. The only downside to that delivery service is that they don't run on the weekend, but I still think it's a fan, the state one didn't either, so I think that's a fantastic advantage. So if you're not aware that we have that, we do. We can get you anything in Buckles fairly quickly, physically, I mean, physical item. We also get cost savings. So some of the, for example, Libby, which is the largest market share for eBook provider, I think they're like 93% market share or something, you know, when we're working on a price with them, it is much more advantageous for Buckles to come in together at 78 member libraries and negotiate pricing for our eBooks. Now, we do have to purchase eBooks, but we get an advantage on the platform fee and that sort of thing by being a member of Buckles, coming together and talking directly to these, to these companies. There are a couple of other price-saving initiatives that we have that you won't see our ILS, that's how we run our business, that's how we know what you want and that's how we get it for you. That's all managed through Buckles. Our public computers is all managed through Buckles. If I have a problem with any of these things, I call Buckles. Their response time is relatively good. They are not keeping us waiting, they come when we need them, they fix things if we have a problem. They're communicative, you know, they're, it's very much a feeling of community and it's all run by the membership as well. So 78 libraries, 78 directors, everything is made by a vote, those decisions and that sort of thing. So I think Buckles membership is actually a really big plus. You can drive to another library if you want to and you can still go in there and check out whatever. And it's no longer called Bergen County Cricket Library System, it's now Bridging Something Something, I haven't learned the new name of it, but just a reminder, there are libraries in Essex County as well that are part of this and you can use them too. So it's a lot of libraries that you can visit. Does anybody have any costs on any of these slices or how we divvy up the funds or any other, oh, programming. Let me talk about programming. So programming is 10% of this, but it's also aided by the New Friends of the Oakland Public Library, who, those of you at home have seen the mailer, the fundraising mailer, they help subsidize this and they help us put on all the programs that we put on all year long for adults, children and young adults. So if you're unfamiliar with the programs that we have at the library, we have, I'll can talk about children's programs first, you know, we have weekly storytimes, we have weekly music programs, some of those are outsourced, especially the music programs, to people who come in and put on a bit of a show for the kids. It's good for socialization, it's good for early literacy, that type of thing is a big part of what we do for children's programming. If you're not familiar with our storytimes, go to the kids page on our website, you can see what we have. You don't have to sign up for the kids times, kids' storytimes, you do have to sign up for the music programs because they fill up very fast, they're extremely popular and it's limited. And then, of course, we do sort of pop-up events every now and then. We'll have a special event for the kids on the off-season, something for Halloween, sometimes a theater production on the stage or sometimes a special craft or something or we bring an animal in and somebody will do a lecture on that. Summer reading, for those of you in town who are unfamiliar with that, that's our big literacy push during the summer. I think a lot of parents are aware of how significantly reading skills drop off between the end of the year and the start of the next school year. If you want to keep your kids sharp, enroll them in the summer reading program, they get prizes all summer long. And in a typical summer reading program now, last year, I should say, we were doing, I think, something like five or six programs a day across all age, across all age groups. I mean, it's our busiest time of year, other people it's a bit slower, for us it's the busiest. So I'm talking about all age groups, but I mean, we just have program after program after program. We have at least two big programs every week for the kids, most of them are on the stage in the library. If you haven't experienced something on the stage, it's a really nice event, you should come down to the library if you haven't been there in a long time and take a look at the stage that we use for these programs. We also do a lot of programs for adults, we do fewer in December, January, February. It's March, we're starting to do them. We do a lot of Sunday concerts for the public. We have bands come in and play and do musical acts, singing acts. We also have, I hesitate to call it true theater, but we've had one-man shows and one-woman shows that talk about history. We've had some introspective lectures, we've had mediums, we've had a lot of people up on that stage who get a pretty good crowd. If you're unfamiliar with this, sign up for our newsletter, that's also a link that's on our website and then every month you will see what it is that's coming out. The adult summer reading program is really great. We had two big concerts last year on our stage. We had dueling pianos who are amazing and the tickets for us were only $10 each and I'll tell you, we're a free public library, we don't charge for anything. We did charge for those tickets because we only have 100 seats and we don't like it when people register and then don't show up, especially for a very expensive program. So that's an exception we make, we charge people $10 so that they'll actually show up to that program because it's so expensive. They're amazing, they probably sound better at the Oakland Public Library Theater than they do in some of the other venues that they play, like the Y where you have to pay, I love the White Coat Y, I'm not taking a dig, but it's $35 to see them there and I think they sound better at the Oakland Public Library. It's an amazing show. They do everything themselves, the lights, the sound, it's incredible. If you haven't checked it out, they're playing again this summer, I think it's July 18th or Friday night, tickets will go on sale a month prior. We had 80's Revolution, which were also amazing, I mean, they sold out, I think NJ Pack or Bergen Pack and then they came to us and somehow didn't sell out, I think it's because people didn't know that we had that program. But they're, you know, seven musicians, high energy, they do, again, all their lights, all their sound, it's a really great program. Those are just two of the bigger programs that we have. We have lots of smaller programs and concerts throughout the whole year, probably more than I could get through now. I think it's important to note that we have a free yoga program here and we have it all year long. We have Tai Chi sometimes on and off. We've had Qi Gong, although we haven't had it back this year, we probably will later in the year, so we have some physical stuff for people who want to get moving. And we have a lot of art classes, if you're interested in fine arts, watercolors, even some dabbling and other mediums, we have origami, stuff like that on a fairly regular basis. So if you're, if you're unfamiliar with this, I encourage everybody to sign up for the newsletter because that's how you'll find out what it is that we're offering every month and then there will be the links for you to sign up for those programs. So that's sort of a quick overview of the programs, but anybody has any specific questions about any of these slices, I'm all ears. Okay, so if we move on to, I think, my third slide here in 2024, right? So what are we doing, how well did we do it and what are our goals for 2025? So over half the population of Oakland is registered with a card. I will say we purge cards after a few years, so if people haven't been there for a while, their card's going to get purged. Come on down, we'll just reissue you a new card. I think a lot of people who haven't been there, let's say five, six, seven years, have no concept of what we currently offer. You don't even have to come into the public library to get your tax investment back if you're a user of e-readers or even downloadable audiobooks, as I was saying before, you use a bunch of those over the course of the year and the library tax is going to pay for itself. If you don't know how to do that, come down and see me and I will show you how to do that. It's part of my job, I love doing it. We circulated more than 100,000 items, we had an increase from 23 to 24. We've been on a steady increase since 2020, which obviously was a bottom out because of COVID, so from 21 to 24, we've been circulating more materials every year than the year prior.
Is that books, you mean?
All materials. I can get to the details in a minute if you, just let me say one more thing, which is that Buckles as a whole, I'm proud of this fact, is on the same trend. Your question, is it physical books? Physical books are actually doing fairly well in terms of their statistics. Fiction was up, nonfiction was down a little bit. Where you see drop-off in physical items is media, specifically movies. You see it a little bit in audiobooks, but we're still performing fairly well in audiobooks. Where you see your increases in digital content. And I think a lot of people didn't know that we had digital content that was free, eBooks, you know, both Libby and Hoopla. We also have made an investment in those collections in order to make more items available to the public. So without getting too into this, because this tends to get a little bit complicated, Buckles shares the E resource bucket for Libby. So everybody contributes and then from that bucket, every Buckles library card holder takes the materials out, they borrow those materials, okay? Libraries are allowed to become what's called advantage customers. Advantage customers purchase additional copies on the side that go to their patrons first. So if, for example, there's an eBook that has 10 holds in Oakland, I'm going to buy additional copies of that to relieve those holds or else they have to wait for those items to become available from the central collection. So we curate an advantage collection and over the last year, we've actually now, Libby has added another feature, which some people are a fan of and some people are not, I use it, it's a cost-per-use model, which means that there is no weight. So if there's 10 holds for Oakland people and I buy the cost-per-use, weight goes away, those 10 people get their copies, we get billed per use rather than billed for one copy, one use or metered content. And so there are a lot of ways to purchase E materials, it does get a little confusing. What we try to do is optimize Oakland patron user experience. That being said, for those of you at home saying, gee, this is really taking a long time, I'm very aware of the average hold times on some of these items and we do work to get them down. It's the volume of users across the county who are creating the backlog. Publishers charge a lot of money to libraries for digital content. So a one copy, one use digital item, which means that one person in all of Bergen County can use it at a time is $100 now. Yeah, and that, and that, now you keep that for forever, but a lot of content is 24 checkouts or two years for $85. That means that once that is expended, either the 24 checkouts or the two years, it disappears. So you have, you know, your ROI can be calculated across all of these, but you're talking about different variables, mainly time and money and how that plays out. So, you know, I do monitor this. I think that, I think digital content is something like 24% of our cert now. So what we try to do is in that material slice, we try to allocate an appropriate amount of money to that collection so that the people that use it are at least getting more content, you know, rather than, I mean, there are some libraries that are not advantage customers. I don't know why, we are, I think it's a great program, we will continue to be as long as we can. So yes, you see patch shifts in use and you will see further shifts in use over the next, certainly the next decade, probably drastic ones. But we are not seeing a drop-off in print and I'm not just talking Oakland Public Library, Buckles as a whole, because I can look at annual cert. The fiction print book is still a very popular item and kids are still checking out books or, yeah, and their parents and their caretakers, so. Any other, I'm sorry, that wasn't a, it was a question, but, okay. So we hosted almost 300 library programs, we play host to community programs. If you're a nonprofit community organization and you want a place to meet, you can meet at the library, it's free, you can use one of our rooms, contact me. We have scouts all the time, we already used it for a while, we've had, we have a model railroad enthusiast group, they're nonprofit, they used it. If you need a space for your meeting, contact me, it's free, you can use it. If you're an individual and you need a room for something, contact me, you can use it, it's free. We have individuals playing mahjong in there or getting together for read, book clubs or reading groups all the time. People want to use the quiet study room to study or do whatever they're doing, they're allowed to do that. The rooms on the lower level are for the public, if you're not familiar with what I'm talking about, because you haven't been down there since it was where we had all the books, you should go down there, it's beautiful and all those rooms are for the public.
Border Health meets there.
Border Health meets there, right, right, right. So there's, you know, we're, we're here for the borough and we're here for residents and we're here for nonprofits. So if you need a space to meet and you can use the TV and the technology that's in there and all the rooms, whatever you need to use, you can use, we'll help you facilitate that. It's all for the public.
But they have to be out by eight o'clock, I think?
They do have to be out by eight o'clock, which I think is our biggest limitation.
I was just asking, just making that out.
Board of trustees has entertained many times keeping the library open until nine, they used to be, you might remember some of the old timers, huh? Who would? That's my, that's my obligatory dig at Pat.
Do you remember that?
But the library wasn't one time open until nine o'clock and the eight to nine period, when you're not getting any patrons, especially in the winter, they had changed it back to eight. For the decade that I've been there, it's been eight o'clock, but yes, you do have to be out by eight o'clock.
Last time I asked that question.
I know, right? So, you know, we had over 50,000 people come through there, it's an increase over 2023. Last year was our best year for programs and our best year for attendance. So program, programs and attendance no longer really go hand in hand with the circulation of materials, those things used to be married a little bit more, now they're not. There are a lot of people who are looking specifically for something to do with their kids, but they do not couple that necessarily with literacy, so that's just a shift in how people behave. It is, you know, not something that is either good or bad, it's just a change in how people operate, you know, they really want the experience for their child, they certainly want the socialization, especially if your kid isn't in daycare yet, or they want the experience in the summer, when maybe when you're home with your children and you're looking for free things to do, but it doesn't always mean that they're then going to turn around and get a bunch of stuff out of the library. Those things have sort of separated where they used to be married a lot more, but we love having people come in there and use the building, use the space, come to our programs or come to the programs that they host themselves. I mentioned we have museum passes, the Library of Thing, digital services, you know, check out our website, they're all tabbed on there, I put some of these on here.
What's Mango Languages?
Mango Languages, it's a foreign language service. If you want to learn how to speak another language, it's free, you sign up, it'll just give you instruction and it's leveled, right? So you start out as a beginner and if you want to stick with it, you just stick.
Video, I mean, digital or?
Yes, it's digital, yeah, you're talking to them and they're, you know, and the computer's talking back to you, so you can practice your pronunciation and that sort of thing. It's a free and it's relatively inexpensive, you know, and I just want to stop here and I do want to say that if a digital service is underperforming, we do not keep it just to have it. We look at the statistics, we look at what's being used, we look at what's not being used. If something is not being used and it is expensive, we don't carry it for the sake of carrying it. Example of that is Comics Plus, it got very sort of non-impressive use, so when it was up, we did renew it. We did that with LinkedIn Learning too and I got a call from a patron this past week who said, what happened to LinkedIn Learning? And I'm explaining that and this individual liked it and used it. So what we do is we say, all right, here's at least one person who's missing this digital service, you know, when we go forward and maybe we bring it back, maybe we renegotiate for another price, maybe we only do a one-year contract. So these things are always changing and moving, we always offer stability initially, meaning if we bring on a service, we're going to bring it on for three years. Because a lot of people don't know what we have and they're learning late what we have. So we would like people to have an opportunity to see them. And then the winners stick, Canopy's a winner, Hoopla's a winner, Freegal Music so far is pretty good, obviously Libby is a, is a huge winner, that sort of thing. Same thing with the museum passes, if nobody wants that museum pass, we don't renew it, you know, we're not, we don't hold things just to say, hey, look, we have this. We only hold things that we see are being used. That's part of making smart purchases with taxpayer money. I think that it's a safe, clean, comfortable facility.
What, what museum passes are it, for Jersey or New York?
Mostly, we have the Morse Museum in New Jersey and we have Storm King Art Center, which is in New York State, and then we have the Intrepid, we have MoMA and we have the Museum of the Moving Image and we have Museum of Natural History. And we've had others in the past, but again, we've cycled through, but I mean, the Intrepid is awesome, you know, MoMA's great, Museum of Natural History, the passes are totally worth it, they're coming in, I promise.
Music, what was that though?
Uh, Moving Image, Museum of the Moving Image, that's in New York as well. We had Museum of the Dog for a while, it was cool, but it wasn't great, it wasn't really worth it, not that many people using it, so we pulled that one. But if you have kids and you're off for the week or over the summer, you want to go to the museum for free or for a discount, come to the library or call us and we'll explain how it works. I just want to say, you know, it's, I, I love our building, I love everything about it, even the things that are tricky. There are some challenges with that building, it's a slate roof. Some of the heating elements in there, you guys know this, they're old. We do have problems every now and then and we're now in a position, the library's now in a position where we can sort of self-fund these capital projects. So if something big and expensive blows up, we don't have to come hat in hand to the borough and say, we need you to bond for this, you know, we have a little bit of room where we can say, we can take this on, we don't have to bother the borough with it and, you know, we can handle this ourselves. And we're really trying to get to that position because the borough had been so generous and so kind and obviously they paid for a renovation on the building, we're trying to always be in a position where we can not come to you and say, I need money. You know, obviously there's, if something explodes or something like that, it, it would be different, but right now we're in a really good position with that. If anybody has any other, any other questions about anything, anything, I'm here for it.
Right, here.
Anybody? I just, before I go, I just want to give a thanks to every department in Oakland. I worked in four other towns before this, this one's the best. We have some type of partnership with everybody, these guys are great, he can't retire ever.
We did not pay him to say that.
No, they did not, and I, and I really, but I seriously mean that, that, you know, everybody is helpful and DPW is beyond helpful. You want to talk about a DPW that's responsive to needs and goes above and beyond, Oakland DPW, they, I mean, they painted our lower level. In other municipalities, that would be unheard of. You know, the, the lower level had gotten tremendous amount of abuse mainly from the kids after school, they put their feet on the walls, they gouge holes in the walls. The guys came through, they patched all the holes, they painted it all, it looks as good as it did, probably better after the renovation, yeah, I switched to, and you know, these things, you know, when we have a leak in the ceiling and they fix it, or we have an electrical issue and they're on top of it, this is the taxpayer money and it also saves us from looking bad. So they do a lot. Every other department is just really wonderful to work with. So I just want to express our gratitude at how great it is to be partnered with everybody.
Thank you.
And you can give me that 20 bucks. Anybody have anything else before I?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you very much, Peter.
All right, shall we just go right to Ariel?
Yeah.
Anybody need a break or we could?
No.
Okay.
Ariel?
I'm ready.
It's time to go to the phone.
I'm ready for it. I'll do my best. Okay. Alrighty. Hi, everyone. Hello. How are you all?
Good.
I am happy to be here with you all tonight. I am excited to talk about the Senior Center. It is a wonderful place. If you have not been there to join us for a program or special event, I really encourage you to join us, not only because it's a lot of fun, but also because the seniors love getting the opportunity to talk with council and mayor.
Before I get started, could you just kind of set the stage in the fact that Oakland is very unique and that we have a senior center?
Yeah.
And there's only half a dozen around the county?
Oh, absolutely. Oakland is, like you said, very special in this fact. For a town of this size, you will not see a senior center like this.
I'd say usually this is, you know, larger suburban, you know, away, you know, in East Frontwood where you're from, those sorts of communities, you would expect to see that. In our type of community, it's much.
The town I worked in, it was in the basement of the church.
Yep, so often you'll see senior services, it's like a club that meets out of the first aid squad or the firehouse, or you'll see it as part of the rec center, but to have an independent freestanding senior center is unheard of. And we are of this area of Westernburg County, we are one of two. Us and Mawa, and Mawa is a much larger town than Oakland. So it really is amazing what is over here. Oakland takes care of their seniors and you invest it early on. We're seeing, you're going to see in the next 10 years such a major jump in senior population and Oakland has invested so early on that you're way ahead of the game because these services are going to be requested by the residents and you all, I think that we're there, we are already offering a lot of them.
And our new bus too.
And our new bus, I will get there, absolutely. We have a fantastic bus that is very well utilized and very much appreciated. The Senior Center has opened residents 55 and up. Our youngest resident currently registered is 57 years old, our oldest resident is 96. So we are, and that 96-year-old resident is there every week, participating in multiple things, exercise, mahjong, all of our special events. So we have a very active and lively center regardless of age. And we are reaching two different generations in the same building and because of that, we need to offer a wide variety because the different populations want different things, need different things. And I think we're doing a great job of that. We offer 11 exercise classes a week, nine of which are instructor-led. They are all varying degree of difficulty. You'll see something like chair yoga, you will see country fusion line dancing, you will see mat Pilates, you will see arthritis balance and ball prevention. And all our instructors have multiple certifications, most of which have specialty certifications, focus on active adult fitness. And they are all great classes. Again, I do recommend you come out and try one, they're a lot of fun.
Could you just talk a little bit, just drill down a little bit, why this is so important for the aging population as far as socialization?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And I was going to get there, but happy to talk about it earlier. So we saw during COVID, this is, we saw during COVID, the isolation of our, not only seniors, everyone, but specifically seniors. A massive, it caused a issue where our seniors, I'm sorry, it was, so the isolation was causing the, I'm sorry.
Looking for the word?
I'm looking for the word and it's just not coming to me. Had major effects on their cognitive function, same, I could not think of the word cognitive. We saw major effects on their cognitive function, major delays. And it came on quickly and rapidly, same word, it came on quickly and it was the isolation, the lack of socialization, not coming out, not being around other people that was absolutely causing this. We saw this across the board. And the importance of this facility to give people a place to come, that's the most important part of this facility, is giving the residents a place to come, whether it's just to get out and see another person is beyond measure. For some people, that's all they're coming here for. They're never going to come to an exercise class, they're never going to come to a fitness class, they're going to come for a cup of coffee and they're going to see another human being. Otherwise, they could be in their house for a month and not interact with another person. And you'll see it if you've, if you've ever spoken with somebody who lives alone, you can see the challenge, how that affects them physically, emotionally. It's very challenging and it's, it's, that's the main purpose and importance of the Senior Center, in my opinion. Of course, the exercise, the fun, the fitness, the transportation, it's all, all necessary, but the, the socialization aspect of the facility is beyond measure, the most important part of it. We try to offer multiple ways for people to get out there and come, those exercise classes, we offer special events, we offer two to four special events every month and those can range from big parties to lectures to educational sessions. We have, like I said, coffee, we have coffee out every day and people will come in and just grab a cup of coffee and they'll come sit down in the office with us and they will just talk and they will tell us what's going on in their lives and that is the, their socialization for the week. We have daily games, you'll come and see mahjong and canasta, you'll see clubs, we've got men's poker, we have a knit and crochet club with 25 amazing ladies who sit there and they knit and they crochet and it's run entirely by a volunteer. All of the supplies are all donated and then they'll knit and crochet and then donate everything they make back to the community. They'll bring blankets to nursing homes, they'll bring hats and scarves to homeless shelters. It's amazing what they do. We have a book club where everything comes from the library and they'll come and they'll meet monthly, they'll read their book and meet monthly and discuss. We, so we really try to offer a little bit of everything for everyone to give, engage everyone and give them a reason to come out, come participate, come socialize, come be with everyone, be part of the community. It's really a central community meeting place for our older adults. In, it also serves as a place, an educational center, expanding their learning. As you know, for many older adults, things like technology can be a struggle and we're there to help educate them or help, there to help build those gaps for them and make sure that they are just as involved with the community as anybody else, you know. They watch, you're, they're not going online and reading what the updates are on, many are, but there are a lot who are not going online on Facebook to get the updates of what's going on in town. They're coming and they are talking with us, they're getting the physical paper printouts of what's going on around town and those are the things they're getting at the Senior Center. They're getting medical services, we have the Bergen County nurses come in bi-monthly and provide blood pressure screening, wellness checks, we have a podiatrist that comes on-site every 60 days to do foot care. We have transportation, which I will go into a little more detail in a further slide, but we offer transportation in town twice a week and we will take you anywhere you need to go in town. Food shopping, the Senior Center, the bank, the library to get your hair done, a doctor's appointment, technology assistance. So I will sit and work with anyone by appointment, we'll sit down for 30 minutes, 40 minutes and we will sit there, anything you can bring to me, I will teach you how to use. You want to learn how to use your new cell phone, you want to learn how to use that tablet so you can zoom with your family members across country, I will teach you how to do it, I will teach you from basics of how to turn your tablet on to how to download an app, how to make it work, we'll do it all. Like I said, we have guest speakers and educational opportunities. Next week, for example, we have a doctor's office coming in to talk about peripheral vascular disease. We have a Bergen County Genealogy Society coming in to teach you about genealogy and how to track your own family tree. Tomorrow, for example, we are having a big fun early St. Patrick's Day party, corned beef and cabbage, so we're really trying to do a little bit of everything. We go on trips, we like the casino, we like to go see shows, we go all over, we've got a lot of plans for some more local trips within the state. We want to go to museums, restaurants, local parks, historical sites in the state and we want to utilize our new amazing bus to do that. So there are a lot of programs in the works and out there. We have a calendar that we put out, it is online, it is emailed. If you are on our mailing list, if you're not on our mailing list, come join us. It's really easy, I need to see a license so I can confirm age and address and that's it. You fill out one piece of paper and you get a card and you're officially a senior.
When you said, mentioned about the bus, I'd just like to mention that now with this new bus, we have a lift, so there's a, we didn't have that before.
I have a whole slide on transportation.
I think Pat's fine, help drive the bus if you can help.
I know, it was, it was a large investment and it is worth it and I will absolutely touch on it.
Yeah.
And then some of the other services we provide, so you won't see these kinds of things, obviously, on our budget, but some of the other things that we provide, food access, we work with several agencies in the area, Meals on Wheels, local food pantries to make sure that our residents, our seniors are getting the food that they need. We have residents who are on fixed incomes who are of only social security, so finances are a challenge for them and they rely on these services to meet their nutritional needs. We also have older adults who may be recovering from injury, who are just no longer able to cook for themselves for one reason or another and programs like Meals on Wheels provide them with the nutritionally balanced meals that are already prepared. So we work as a conduit to help get them access to that with our partners. And sometimes it's as simple as one of us going over to a food pantry, picking up a bag of groceries and dropping them off at somebody's house. It's one of those subtle challenges that not everybody realizes happen in Oakland, but there are a lot of people who are in that position. So health, mental health services, we work with partners like Alzheimer's Foundation, ActNow Foundation. A lot of the times, we are that first line who sees what's happening with our residents. We see them every day and we'll see those cognitive declines happen subtly. You know, one month, everything is normal and then the next month, we'll notice that we're having the same conversation over and over about the same thing with somebody. So we're, we're often that first person to go and call that family member, the child of our resident, our member, let them know, hey, this is something we've noticed going on and we just want to make you aware. And then from there, we will help put them in contact with a sort of resources to go from there. We're not social workers, we're not medical professionals, but we can relay what we're seeing and help them get the resources they need to help their family members. And then we do a lot of assistance with navigating government programs, nothing in the government comes easy. We help with filling out applications, everything is moving digital now, which for many is a difficult, is difficult because we do still have a lot of senior residents who do not have access to the internet or if they do, they can't navigate it. We also have those with hearing impairments, if they need to make phone calls for assorted services to meet with different agencies, we will sit there and help them make those phone calls and act as that go between, we help them fill out Senior Tax Free's pad, we help them make real ID appointments, we help them access CHOR appointments. CHOR is a Bergen County service where they'll come in at no charge, you only pay for the equipment and they'll do things like install handlebars and do small home projects, install lights and fire detectors and things like that, things that don't really need to go up on a ladder. So we'll help them with those kinds of things. We help with financial assistance, so SHIP, State Health Insurance Program, it is a program put out by the state to help navigate Medicare. We do the coordinating of that, we, especially during open enrollment, we offer sessions with our SHIP counselor and we set that all up and help, we help countless people throughout the year navigate Medicare as they're coming, they're retiring and reaching that age to transition. It's confusing and it's complicated and changes every year, so we're thankful.
Do you do that personally?
So I'm not providing, SHIP is and we do the coordination of it.
Yes, I meant the coordination.
Yes, we do the coordination with our SHIP counselor. Tax prep, so Midland Park Senior Center offers no cost tax, basic tax returns and we help disseminate that information, get that out, coordinate with them to make sure that people have access to tax prep resources. We assist family and caregivers with resources and information on housing and caregiving and elder law, understanding the difference between home healthcare, assisted living, nursing care, figuring out what might be the best fit. We have a library of resources, brochures from lots of different agencies, lots of different facilities in the immediate area and we help them figure out, you know, this might be the right path that you need to go. We've met so many people and we've worked with so many people and we really just try to be a resource to our residents and their families. We help with, I'd say we provide bereavement support in the sense that when people pass, when loved ones pass away, we try our best to connect them with different groups, there are bereavement groups all over the area and we do often help connect them with that with, I'm sorry. I can't think of the word, I'm sorry. I'm sorry? Counselors, thank you.
Counselors.
I'm sorry, it's been a long day. Counselors, and again, it goes back to just having them come in, sometimes when you're in a house alone and you're used to having somebody else there, it's good to just have somebody available to sit and talk with. We do regular wellness checks, we make phone calls to people who are at home due to illness, injury, or we just haven't seen them a while and we check in. During COVID, we made over 500 calls, checked in with every single member we had, anyone who was on our roster to check, see how they were doing, see if they were in the area, if they needed anything. We did our food shopping program and helped a lot of residents access groceries. For one reason or another, they could not leave their homes and it was a fantastic volunteer program. The community really came out and supported our residents, our seniors. We were able to make those connections and I really think that that helped make COVID more manageable for a lot of individuals. We have in the past assisted persons experiencing homelessness, helping them find shelters, helping them connect with social workers at the county and state level. We have a fantastic snow removal program here in town, snow shoveling for seniors. The cost of hiring a company to be on call for, through snowstorms throughout the year can be something that many seniors just can't afford. Yeah, that can't afford and we've connected with Boy Scouts and many other volunteers in the community and they will go out and shovel driveways and walkways for our senior residents at absolutely no cost. We coordinate with the seniors, they call into us, let us know they need assistance, we reach out to our slew of volunteers and we get somebody out there as soon as we can and it's been a fantastic program. And it's only possible because the residents of Oakland are there to volunteer. It's a community, it really is. People come up and say, how can I help, what can I do, how can I volunteer with a senior on a regular basis? And we do what we can to bring as many people in because it's a fantastic thing. We have a, we maintain and provide a database of local contractors and tradesmen in the area when a senior needs to go out and needs an electrician, there is no phone book anymore to look that up. And there's always a risk of scam, so we really try to maintain based off recommendations of others and people who've reached out to us. We have those names to give to them, to provide to them when they need it.
Understanding that we don't recommend.
We don't recommend it.
Anybody, we're just providing.
Names, yeah.
Names, that's it.
We really, disaster preparedness, just this past September, we had OEM in to provide a disaster, disaster preparedness seminar for our seniors. We also, I'll touch upon this a little later, but we actually just put out a grant proposal for a emergency, emergency preparedness project where we'd love to be able to send out a mailer to every household within Oakland. And it's a two-part project. The one part would be that there'd be like a tearaway at the bottom of the mailer where individuals could then fill out their information and say, in the event of an emergency, these are the kinds of things that I may need assistance with. It would go off of the police department's already active Operation Reassurance program where they maintain a database internally that people provide the information to them that in the event that they would make a call to their house, they would know what they were walking into. And it kind of goes off and expands off that where if we were to have a, a power outage, an extended power outage like we did during some of the major storms and we had an individual that we knew was on oxygen and relied on power to be able to do, use their oxygen machine and their battery, of course, we'll have a battery backup, but that's not going to last forever, we'll know that that person is going to need additional help. Or if we needed, God forbid, we needed everyone to get out of their homes because of a natural disaster like a fire or something like that, we would know that this person may be trapped in their home, they don't have transportation, they may not have the ability to leave on their own and we'll know that and we'll be able to assist.
And Ariel, isn't the Senior Center also a shelter location as well? It's got a full generator, you want to talk about that as well?
Absolutely, the Senior Center is, is a heating and warming center, is a warming and cooling center, it is a location in the event of an emergency, an evacuation, we are, like you said, we do have a full generator, so in the event that there is a power outage, we will be, continue to be up and running.
We have a full kitchen?
Yep, I was about to say, we have a full kitchen, so if we needed to prepare meals or store any kind of food or medicine or anything like that, we would have that ability to.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. And then we really try to offer as much as we can on scam awareness. Scams are a major issue facing the senior community, all communities, but especially senior community, they tend to be the most targeted population. And we have presentations brought in by our Oakland Police Department, banks, we have local banks come in to do financial scam awareness, we have the county come in to do an assortment of other scam awareness, there's just unfortunately so many scams out there and we really try to make sure everyone is up to date on the different options. And then other, we also like to talk about ways that you can keep yourself safe with banking, with shopping, there's as best as we can. Any questions on? So we work with a lot of fantastic community partners. As I mentioned, the Boy Scouts help us with our snow shoveling program. Bergen Pack offers, offers us show tickets through their Arts Access Program. Arts Access allows for, access to the arts allows for well-rounded life experiences and this program allows access to our residents, to tickets, to their shows regardless of ability to pay. ability to pay. So essentially, they'll send us a list of shows for that month that they have available tickets. Our seniors will be able to request tickets, and it's kind of on a first come, first served basis. We will put it in the request, and they'll let us know what tickets we get, and then we disseminate those tickets. And our seniors have had the opportunity to see some amazing shows, orchestra-level seating at no cost. It's been a really fun project for them. We worked with Oakland Chamber. We do a lot of event sponsorships. It's one of the ways that we try, we are able to keep our programs as low cost as possible and as low cost to the Oakland community as a whole in our budget. Is we do sponsor, about 50% of our events have at least some level of sponsorship, whether that's food-related, entertainment-related, other supplies. They'll come in and help us run these events. But it's really great for us to work with our local community partners, our local agencies, our local businesses to provide to our residents. We work with Mothers Club. They offer Thanksgiving and holiday dinners and donations every year. We, this past year, the picture that you can see on the screen is our bus driver helping with the delivery of all these meals. They had a lot. We help with organizing the names of the seniors that we're aware of who could really use this extra little pick-me-up during the holidays, and we help get those out to them.
Does the state or federal, who offered a state or federal program? It used to be a program where they gave away butter and they gave away cheese.
Not familiar with that. It might not be a program.
A long time ago. I guess they stopped doing that.
Dating yourself.
You have been at the council a long time, you said before, Brad.
That's it, I'm not talking.
So they do have a farmer's market program where they can get vouchers to bring to farmers' markets. Specified farmers' markets to go get fresh fruits and vegetables.
And Pat, this one's for you. This one's for you.
My transportation. So the senior bus runs twice a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, about three to four hours per day. It's by appointment, so the seniors will call us, let them know. And it's not just seniors, it's also those who, who may need some assistance. It is a handicap accessible vehicle. We do have a lift and wheelchair, it can bring a wheelchair up and walk in two wheelchairs. And it'll go anywhere within Oakland's borders, mostly. If it's right on the border, we will go a little past. But generally, it's within Oakland's borders. We have seen a 100% increase in rides for the same time period between July to December of 2023 and July to December of 2024. Because we got the bus in July, I wanted to be able to give you the best relation numbers. Additional, so this is, when you look at the budget, this is the area that you'll see the largest percent increase for 2025 requests. Because of these additional rides, the variable, because of all the riders, the additional rides, the variable schedules that require additional time dedicated to the coordination. And the, because we now have a lift on previous bus, we did not have a functioning lift, and then the van we used did not have a lift. We now have individuals in wheelchairs using it, which is wonderful. We are so happy that we are now able, handicap accessible. But it, not a but, but it does take six minutes longer to load a wheelchair passenger versus a walking passenger onto the vehicle.
Do you see this service increasing in the future as we go along as we're budgeting?
Yes.
Next year or the following year?
I do, I think. So here's where it gets challenging. I have people who will tell me on a regular basis, I would give up my car today if I had more transportation options, if I was able to get where I needed to go more often. Bergen can't, but of course, unless I can show, unless we're regularly seeing it, it's hard to ask for additional. So it's kind of like a witch came first, the chicken or the eggs. But I do anticipate growth. I'm already seeing it. Between last year and this year, we're seeing this growth. One of the things I'd love to do is be able to expand off of the program to offer medical appointments. So where, one of the challenges that we face in Oakland is our location to the greater Bergen County programming. We are so far west, and because of that, we're surrounded by Passaic County on about half of our size. Bergen County's transportation program will not cross counties. So Bergen County does offer transportation, door-to-door bus transportation. They'll also call Ubers as needed for residents, but they will not cross counties. So somebody might be right over the border, they need to go two minutes into Pompton Lakes, but they won't take them there. But they will take them to Paramus or Hackensack. And I understand the need to have a break somewhere. They can't go everywhere. But that is where I think that the borough can fill the gap in the future, to be able to set a set distance as far, how far we'd be willing to go, and be able to offer those rides to really help. It would be a huge help to residents.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So that is the area that I would see it expand. I'd love to see it run an additional day as well.
What do you think is going to be a capacity where you really have to put another day in there? Is it soon, or is it six months, two months?
Within the next year.
Within the next year?
Within the next year. It was something that we were looking at pre-COVID, actually, and then things kind of went down because people didn't want to be in the same space as anybody else. But we've come out of that. And we are seeing, we're continuing to see increase. Our Thursdays, we are close to fall at this point.
Okay. And Ariel, throughout her tenure here, has, I think you've taken a lot of sort of looks at the program and how we can expand it. One of the focus areas has been, you know, looking for another town to partner with on expanding the program that way. So far, there really hasn't been any towns that were all that interested in it. But yeah, this is something that I think you're seeing this expansion now because of the vehicle somewhat.
Absolutely.
And you're going to see further expansion. I guarantee you, if we were able to stand up a program that offered medical appointments to surrounding areas, I think it would get used.
I can tell you, as dealing with two senior parents that are in the same, this is invaluable to the seniors.
Yeah.
To be able to get to those appointments and everything else like that.
Absolutely, I agree, and I see it. And what the biggest piece of feedback that I'll get across the board from our residents, our current members, is we need more transportation. I come to the Senior Center daily if you offer to ride here. So growth and participation, we've seen steady growth year after year. Our total membership is 807 members. That's 16% of Oakland's eligible population of 55-plus. But I want to keep in mind that 55-plus, 55 to 70, it's a very wide range, but 55 to 70, you're not seeing that many, you still see a lot of people working. And you're seeing more people work longer due to inflation and individuals living longer, depending on numerous factors. People are, know that they've run out of money if they retired as early as they originally planned. So that's part of the reason why we're not seeing them come as quickly as I originally thought, or originally we were seeing during COVID, people were retiring earlier than they originally had planned. And we saw people coming out because they had nothing else to do, but a lot of people are going back to work. Our average weekly.
Ariel, do you have then a sense of, let's say, 70-plus, what that percentage is in terms of Oakland's population as, you know, their members of the center?
I can, I have the number, but I don't know it off the top of my head. I can get that for you. Our average weekly attendance is 200, we see 260 people, 260 check-ins. It definitely grasps absolutely every person. Sometimes people will just come in and ask a question and then leave, but that is generally what we see. And it changes throughout the year. So our programming is much lighter between December and February due to weather, due to snowbirds, people who go down south during the winter months, and people just don't want to leave their homes when it's yucky outside. But we're going to start seeing it uptick usually around the end of March, early April. We start seeing the big resurgence in our membership coming through. They stay through summer, early fall, and then they usually head back down south come November. And then our daily average attendance with our exercise classes, so we offer two exercise classes every single day, is about 45 people. So financials, so the main reason that you're seeing any increase in the budget is due to inflation. Just costs of everything has gone up. Our vendors, our exercise instructors, their costs have increased year after year because gas increases, supplies increase. Refreshments budget, refreshments are a big portion of our budget. It's a big portion of our programming between the coffee supplies, the supplies for our special events. Food has gone up tremendously. We're all seeing it. We're all seeing the cost of eggs skyrocketing, skyrocketing. But I think we've done a pretty good job at keeping our budget increases limited year after year, and I think a large part of that is due to sponsorships. We try to keep the cost to our residents as low as possible. If we can do it, the events and the programs for free, we will, absolutely will, but we sometimes will charge $5, $10 to help offset the costs. But ideally, if we can keep it as low as possible, that is the best thing. And then grants, a lot of, we brought in, we were able to do a lot of big updates over the last few years due to grants. We replaced a lot of furniture in the facility, all new chairs, all new. We have brand-new entryway furniture. We got a lot of storage. We have a new sound, a new sound system within the facility, audiovisual system, our database that we installed in 2021 with the hardware, that was through a grant. We just put in a brand-new, beautiful digital signage in the front entryway that allows us to be able to display our flyers in large scale and also cut back on printing costs for flyers. All came through grant funding over the last few years. And I had mentioned, we just put in another grant request this past week. So we're always looking for a way to fund our programs and not hit the taxpayers.
You do the grant application?
I do all the grant applications, with some assistance from administration, of course.
Yeah, it's sort of, it's a coordinated effort. But Ariel is actually, Ariel is very good at putting together grant applications. Especially during COVID, when Community Development Block Grant Fund was made available, I think we were probably one of the few towns that were able to take advantage of, what, there were three or four supplemental grant rounds, and we were able to take advantage of it every time. Outdoor furniture.
Outdoor furniture.
On the patio, the new stuff, the signboard, all of that. The registration system that we did, she's been very creative in looking at ways to use that funding. And you know, we've applied to the AARP program, you know, a couple of times. That is a hyper-competitive nationwide program, but we'll be, we'll be trying that again as well. And we have.
The new age-friendly grant we'll be applying for again. The second round of funding is coming out very shortly, so we'll be applying again with a similar project because it's a worthwhile project to try to fund. Let's see, so as I mentioned, so with the biggest increase that you'll see in requests for the 2025 budget, just percentage-wise, will be for the cost of my driver, my bus driver, because the additional hours taken to run the bus, coordinate the bus. He puts together all the reporting for me, and they're very detailed reports. I can give you how long each individual person was on the bus each time, mileage, everything. So just overall, the time that it takes to run the program has increased with this new bus because the bus is so popular.
You're talking about $3,000.
Yeah.
I just, it's important for the public to understand, we're not talking about tens of thousands of dollars, we're talking $3,000 to provide more service.
If you go back, because I think what you saw was a little bit of an increase already last year, right? If you go back to, let's say, 2023 and compare it to what we're asking for this, this year, it's about doubling that cost, we're doubling the amount of service offerings.
We've doubled the services, doubled the rides, and we have better, better facilities and programs for the user.
Absolutely.
Right, right. But still, when you're talking about total dollars, that's $5,500.
No, no, I understand. But I think, I think the reason I'm asking, I'm presenting it this way is the service that our seniors are getting. It's important to understand the value proposition of what they're getting, and by you outlining all the services and events. And everything you're providing. This is, you know, unless you're a senior, I don't think the rest of the population really understands if you're truly providing senior services, not just a senior center.
Yes.
My cost increase is relative to the services being used.
Yes. And my, my, my point in saying that it's $5,500 is just to your point that it's a tremendous value for the money.
Correct.
I agree.
We made your case for it there.
Thank you. So future goals, I'd love to increase senior bus offerings. We want to provide increased support to our caregivers because they are a part of senior services, the people, the children who are taking care of their aging parents and then some, so we want to offer educational opportunities. We want to bring people in to talk about not the most exciting topics, but end-of-life planning and what you can expect when a loved one passes through dementia care and what you may see when your family is faced with these situations. A lot of people have no idea what to expect until it hits, and then they're just overwhelmed by everything. So we'd love to be able to offer educational opportunities. And then support networks, people getting to talk with other individuals who are in the same stage of life as they are.
So I have a few questions. So, so obviously, you've got a lot of independent seniors living in Oakland.
Yes.
Whether they're single or, you know, there's. So my question to you is, since they live in Oakland, they're part of your program. Now, if they've got a child that lives out of state, can they reach out to you for the services and the planning?
Absolutely. We help all the time. A lot of what we do is working with family members who are not in the area and help them navigate what's going on with their family member. So when I was saying that we're that first line of defense in a sense, we're reaching out to them, and then from there, we're helping, we're sending them. A lot of times, we'll pull brochures and contact information, we'll mail it to them.
So you're bridging that gap.
And we're bridging that gap, exactly. We're trying to act as a resource to everyone in related to senior services, senior living.
Okay. If there's a, I believe it's a Medicaid program where the caregivers get paid.
They do, yes. There is where, you know, a lot of times, people have to either leave their jobs or limit their work because they are caring for their loved ones, and it is more affordable to pay a family member to care for them than to pay for an entire assisted living facility or nursing home.
But it is Medicaid, not Medicare.
We love to develop some new programs. Intergenerational program is one of the big areas we like to focus on this year. It's something that's been, I've had families of children, children have, the parents have been reaching out to me. They want the opportunity for children to connect with seniors.
That, I was going to say, what does intergenerational programming mean?
Children and seniors. So what, for example, one of the things I'd love to see, I do technology courses with our seniors. I'll sit down and I'll work with them, but I'd love to have the middle schoolers come down from the hill and be able to provide, you know, once a month, you can sign up and sit down with a middle schooler who, they all know technology, they've been doing it since birth, and they can sit down with seniors. There is, it's so important for older adults to spend time with children and for children to be able to spend time with older adults. We see improved communication, enhanced self-esteem, improved memory for our seniors, for kids. There's, they recognize academic, improved academic achievement through senior mentoring programs. They're exposed to the knowledge and the demeanor of older adults, particularly if they don't have grandparents who are regularly engaged in their lives because they may live on, or may not live in the area, or they may not have grandparents. So we'd love to be able to offer programs of that nature. We've talked about doing something fun like a mini trunk-or-treat kind of thing where the seniors get to set up tables, fun-themed tables. We have local community partners donate candy, and the kids can come in and go trick-or-treating. Seniors love that kind of thing. They love seeing little kids. Anytime somebody comes in with their parent for recreation and they're bringing their babies and their little kids, the seniors all kind of swarm, they love it. I think it'd be great to be able to try to bridge that gap and bring everyone together because like we've, like we've gone over, it's a community center. It may be focused towards our older residents, but it, it offers a space for many to get involved. And then one of the other things is our seniors have been asking for opportunities to volunteer. They want to be able to get out in the community and give back. So we are researching volunteer opportunities for our seniors. So we are researching volunteer opportunities for our seniors. And then we do, the one project that I have on, that is in the back of my mind that needs to be done on the facility, we've been doing a lot of small things here and there, the building's not that old, it's 30 years old, we have some updates that need to be made. We're redoing the men's bathroom this year, they're getting all new flooring, new partition, fresh paint, it'll really make the space look nice. We're redoing the window treatments this year. We, like I said, did all that furniture in the front entryway, but the siding needs to be replaced. So it's one of the projects that I have for myself to try to identify and apply for funding sources to try to redo our siding. It was something that I know was a project planned several years ago, but then we had something that took priority, the fire suppression system, right?
Right. So the most recent projects, a couple of those, the window treatment, the men's bathroom is, you know, on budget funding.
Right.
But a lot of the other improvements that we've done, you know, when we replaced the roof, repaved the parking lot, redid the carpeting and flooring and painted, redid the ladies room, all of that was either in whole or in part funded through community development block grants, as was the emergency generator that really allows the facility to function as a, as an emergency shelter. So that's something where I think we're going to get probably sooner rather than later in the next year or two, either we're going to identify a funding source, or if we're not able to identify a suitable grant source, we will just have to put it in the capital program to self-fund. Because by that point, it'll be 35-plus years old, it is getting worn and cracked and some holes here and there.
We're seeing some critters getting in and beehives being built into the siding. So, and DPW has been amazing. Anytime we see something, they come, they patch what they can, but it is getting to a point.
But I got to tell you, for the residents that have never seen the building, they should maybe come down and take a look at it. The inside is gorgeous.
It's great.
I mean, with the work that you did with the new flooring, the AV system, the new furniture, you know, the game room in the back. I mean, it truly is a beautiful facility.
It is.
And, you know, we as a community should really be proud of that and the work that you do.
Can we even use the senior basement for storage for some of our stuff?
Well, I have dreams.
Yes, we do.
I would love to find a way to renovate the basement, to make it usable space. That is a, you know, 20-year-old dream. But I can hobby here. I just got to find a way to come up with a few million dollars.
That it?
I believe so, yeah.
That's it? Does anybody have any questions?
Anyone have any other questions?
No.
Anything else I can touch upon?
Do you see, do you see, expected, how much expected growth do you see this year with these seniors?
So based off the last two years, I think that what we've seen, we're seeing roughly , you know, 80 to 90 new members, I think that's going to become the standard. We have, 2021 is when we first started tracking these numbers, but we're kind of, we were coming right out of COVID, so that was, I don't think that was accurate number, even 2022, I don't think that was accurate. But after this year, we'll have a better idea of what, we'll have three years of data to be able to accurately see what we see each year.
Anybody else? That's it, Mr. Coons, anyone?
Just a reminder, same bat time, same bat channel. Tomorrow night, 6 o'clock, we'll be here to hear from DPW, Fire Department, and the police.
And I just want to say, it's really important that we have this roundtable discussion like this with our department heads, because, you know, taxes are a dirty word, but I think it's important for people to understand the value proposition that they're getting for the taxes that they pay. And the services that are provided here in Oakland are very unique compared to other towns in the level of service that we provide.
And thank you, Ariel, for coming in.
Thank you very much.
I think we're going to thank Peter, we want to thank him for his time coming in. And Rich and Dave, thank you for staying with you. And Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Not seeing any further business, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much for coming. We'll see you tomorrow at 6 o'clock next week.
It's still raining.
Yeah. Good job. Good job.
Did we leave everything here?